Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a -- All right, tonight is a regular work session meeting followed by a special action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board of -- to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens' logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. All right, so, pleasure of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we'd like to inform the public that the Board met an executive session this evening from 6:30 to 7:15 to discuss matters of personnel negotiation and potential litigation. So, next up then will be the audience of citizens. If anyone would like to have a public comment. Good evening, Mr. Patchell.
Yes, good evening, and I'll try to make this as brief as I possibly can. I have a few things. I never try to put too much on the plate so that we can digest it, and maybe the next few meetings in the future, we would be able to discuss some of the things which I'm going to bring up as current. First thing, I talked to Dr. Dietrich about the concussions from the football season. Now, if anybody saw that young man during the Super Bowl, he was carried off the field. I don't know, it was a rather large hit, and they said, "Oh yeah, he had a head injury." I think they might even have a moratorium. "Please do not say that word. It's a very touchy subject. We are trying to fix it." But I said, "If it was only seven concussions, in 10 years, that would be 70 young people, young men." Then, I don't know what the statistical thing on neurology, but even if, even if half them were suffering early dementia, that would be a pretty sad statistic. And I've been on this topic for, I don't know, quite a long time, but I said, you know, this is a, this is a ingrained thing in a society of ours, and I said, "You know what? Eh, you know, you gotta break a few eggs, you know, to make progress." So, I just can't help but thinking, "Boy, I wonder if that guy, when he's 35, when he's no longer playing, is able to remember where he lives?" It's a very sad situation. My first order of business tonight is to revisit my warnings about the seismic change taking place in the federal tax code. First off, we have a cap on state and local taxes, $10,000. Wow, you know what? If we just systematically keep going along, and in 10 years, I'm sure that every single person in this school district will be well up to the cap, and they'll be saying in 2019 at April 15th, "Wow, I can't believe this is really bad." Also, I'm in 1946, so this year is the first year of the mandatory, mandatory distribution, and when you put all these things together, and it was only two dependents, you know, we had it taken by that medical deduction, no more moving expenses. I'm telling you, the public is really challenged on this stuff. And you know what? As I pointed out last time, I don't know anybody in this district that's really wealthy. You know what? You're all middle-class. Real wealth? Oh yeah, you got, you got a net worth of about $100 million? Yeah, that's real wealth. Nobody in this, nobody in this room, nobody is even close to that. So, now we also have the ending of the American Fascination with a HELOC, Home Equity Line of Credit. "Oh no, we can't do that anymore. That's not deductible." How do you think people sent their kids to college? "Oh yeah, we got a home equity loan." Yeah, that's how they went to school. "How did you buy your car?" "Yeah, a home equity loan." "How'd you do this? How'd you do that?" Well, that's all over. I don't know what people are gonna do. I'm telling you what. That enabled everyone to buy and do everything that they ever wanted to do, okay? 4/15/19 is tax day for the mega-hit. This added to the pension and Social Security will cause pain to every person rooted in the old what-was. Well, the what-was is gonna be gone away. "I can't wait for millions to start their quarterly payments." "Oh yeah, you had to get a distribution." "Well, well, Tom, you know, you're gonna have to pay $5,300 a quarter." "How am I gonna do that? I gotta mail money to Patty Gallagher." "Oh, this is gonna be really bad." "Well, I tell you, I'm gonna have to figure it out. I know, maybe I have to take a distribution to pay the distribution." Okay, this is a good year. It is a good year. Get out of debt. And that, that's something, you know, huh, paying off your bills? Well, there's no joy in that. But, you know, we gotta go on, you know? That's, that's the federal government, the state government, everybody kicking a can down the road. "Hey, when do we start paying back?" "Ah, don't worry about it, be good." Okay? Get out of debt. You owe $100 million. You know what? $100 million is eight zeros after the one, okay? Eight zeros. Eight? Yeah, you're behind the eight ball. I'm telling you what, you gotta start paying his money back. I know, I know you don't wanna do it, and there's no joy in it, and it, so, we're not dreaming out about spending money anymore. And I have this little thing, compliments, in the North Penn Reporter. I thought it might be interesting. I do get the paper purely for the coverage of the, of the school district, and it's, it's pretty good. Sometimes it deviates a little bit. Time was, however, thrift was considered a virtue. People sat at kitchen tables, calculating how to bring their outlays for living and retiring into alignment with their incomes. But eventually, many people decided, "This is no fun. Instead, let's disconnect enjoyable spending decisions from the tiresome facts of resources, thereby living the way the federal government does." Look, when we start figuring this budget, I don't wanna hear about 5.4, or said, "Oh, $9 million." "Ah, it's not, I think I can get it down," as Mr. Shirokki said. Takes a very fine pencil to work out $9 million. And I said, "I don't know how we're gonna do it." And you know what? This is all backwards. You need to, what you need to do is, "How much money do we have coming in?" Well, that's what we gotta stick to. Stop with the, "We're gonna, we're gonna figure all the spending." "Oh yeah, we don't make enough money. I guess we'll have to raise the taxes again." You gotta stop this robotic spending money. This is the problem. And you know what? Three, three more raises for the Federal Reserve? Three, three this year? Three next year? Three next year? You know what the historic norm is for the 10-year Treasury? About 6%. I, I, I'm telling you what's gonna happen. I hope you're listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Would anyone else like to make a public comment?
Yeah, my name is Edward Madge, rezotti 424 Bonnie Lane, and as you can see from the little tag, I also work for the district. I think it's time that the American people get into the world of reality. You want good police forces. You want good schools. You want bridges repaired. You wanna spend hundreds of billions of dollars more in the military. There is only one way that it can be paid for, and it's called taxation. I believe if you frugally raise taxes in a legitimate amount and use those resources wisely, I don't think many people will complain. I understand there are people that are on fixed incomes. I understand it, and I believe there is programs, I've understood, and they can get some reimbursement for some of them. But I read in the, in the report, the article I had, I read, it said somewhere about $100, let's say $130 in a year increase in property tax for schools. I don't know, maybe because my kids are done to school. I went through the school. I got a hell of an education. My daughter got a hell of an education, and personally, I'd like the next generation, the grandkids. I will not have any grandkids, but it's investment of the future. Reason my family even moved out to this area was back in 1973 because my mother considered the Philadelphia schools to be geared for morons, and that's exactly the way she worked it. The deterioration of the schools is what led many of the people to leave the Philadelphia area and move to the suburbs. Let's face it, many of us probably are in that boat. To have good schools, you need one main thing, good people. Good people wanna be paid. They need facilities to operate in. And if people use wise decisions on how you spend the tax people, taxpayers' money, I don't think they should have much of a complaint. Personally, you wanna raise my taxes up $150 a year to keep and maintain good standards of education? I think that's a damn bargain. It really is. We as Americans live a lot of wasteful stuff. I hate to say it. And, you know, putting up the money into education, the last thing we need is a population as ignorant as it can get because of poor education. Public schools should be a right for every child. They shouldn't have to go to Germantown Academy or La Salle, and I, I admire those people that can afford those. Most people can't. Like I say, I've, was educated in the public school system, and I think I got a pretty good education. I wish I would've maybe taken advantage a little more of some of the opportunities that were afforded me. I know some of my daughter's friends, which she keeps in touch with, they've been very successful with the education they've got through this school. Being a bus driver, one of the things I do have the privilege of, of getting to interact with people, the teachers, coaches, some of the faculty that are involved with our future business leaders, academic decathlon. You see the awards that we get here, and you're ranking the state. What took that is good people did that, and good people wanna be paid. And I, I agree, sometimes we think that the teachers are underpaid, but to get good, qualified people and to keep people in that career, you gotta make them reasonable pay. So, I, I don't really like to hear people complain about paying somebody fairly. I really don't. We do have to cough up the money. We live pretty darn cheaply in this district. Compare us with a lot of the local districts. Go over to Bucks County. I think, you know, some of the conservative things, I don't see the giant palatial schools that I've traveled to, to many districts in our area. These schools are outrageous. They are wastes of money. They are palatial places, that the out, the upkeep on them has gotta be astronomical, and those people have got some hellacious tax bills. You've, you've worked pretty well over the years to keep them the taxes down, but it's starting to come back to haunt you. That school, my understanding, and there's some of the meetings I've done, $200 million is estimated to have to go over to rebuild some of the facilities in that building. That's the way it goes, and it's gotta be paid for, and there's only one way to get it paid for, and that's taxes. Not borrowing, or not doing Hail Marys, or cutting, cutting, cutting. You can only cut so far. You can only cut to the point where the place is no longer operational. And we gotta make the people realize it. Give them value for their money. That's what I hope you people will do with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Madge. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Mrs. Leonard?
Hi, Susan Leonard, 309 Upper Valley Road, North Wales, Pennsylvania. I'm here because I'd like to talk about all-day kindergarten. Tomorrow's weather doesn't look promising. Monday, we had a two-hour delay. Two weeks ago, we had a two-hour delay, and I remember when my children were in all-day kindergarten, and they had morning session, and every time there was a two-hour delay, they didn't have school. So, I bring this up to you today because I've been on this board myself since 2011. I talked about all-day kindergarten in 2011, and it kinda fell on deaf ears. How are we gonna pay for it? We have no space. Back in 2015, I brought up all-day kindergarten. How are we gonna pay for it? We have no space. So, in 2016, when I was part of the Education and Community Policy Committee, I decided to look at whether we have space or not, and whether we have the money or not. And I always thought that the money would be secondary to the space because that seemed to be a bigger issue for current board members and, and previous board members. So, there was a committee formed, and there was a committee formed with administrators and teachers and community members, and they did a study about the, the purpose of all-day kindergarten and the, and whether it was feasible and whether it was wanted. And I personally went out to every elementary school. I visited 13 elementary schools, and I can tell you, in my visits and in my studies and my reports, out of the 13 elementary schools, nine had space. Nine were willing to be accommodating. Nine had classrooms for one, if not two, more kindergarten classes, and that did not involve eliminating the art or music classrooms. And also, I spoke to the principals and the administrators and the kindergarten teachers, and there was not, well, there was one out of the 13 elementary schools that was not in favor of all-day kindergarten, but, but 12 were, and 12 of the principals were, and 12 of the kindergarten teachers were. And I'm trying to understand, really, what the pushback is. We are North Penn School District, and we are one of the few that don't have all-day kindergarten yet. There was a study that wanted to be presented to the full Board at a work session, and it was voted down. So, I'm asking that this Board at least set up a date to have the presentation presented to them, probably at the next work session, so that this issue does not get kicked down the road again and again and again, and that we commit to a date that we can start implementing all-day kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard. Mrs. Leonard, stay tuned. Would anybody else like to make a comment? Okay, then we'll move on. Recommend approval of the minutes from the January 18, 2018 action meeting as circulated.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Ott. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. I recommend approving the adoption of the preliminary general fund budget for the 2018-2019 school year totaling $260,621,247, and authorize the administration to apply for exceptions from the Act I tax limitation for which the district is eligible per the attached resolution per item BA2A through Y.
Do I have a motion to accept a superintendent's report?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Romic. All in favor, or any questions or comments?
I'll just comment that this, this resolution does not commit the Board to doing anything in terms of a tax increase. All we're doing is what the Board has done every year since 2006, except for one year, and we're applying for the exceptions which we may or may not be entitled to. So, we will apply for them. We'll see what we're eligible for, and then the Board will know collectively what our ability to have any millage increase will be. There's been no discussions publicly or amongst ourselves privately about what the budget will look like. We, we've only seen one version of the budget at this point, and the Business Office will present a revised budget within the next few weeks. So, this is a very, very preliminary step, and I would just, I would just wanna make that clear. There were references in the public comment to 5.6% and things like that. There's nobody on this Board that would support a 5.6% tax increase, and we wouldn't be permitted to do that by law. So, again, this is just a very preliminary step, and stay tuned for more.
I would also like to point out that there are six new people on this Board, soon to be a seventh new person. So, even if there were a balanced budget today, I think we'd still be going through this process just so everybody could learn how the budget process works. Okay, so, do I have a motion to accept a super, or superintendent's report? Oh, I'm sorry.
Ready for the vote?
Question? Um, sorry. Go ahead.
Can we separate this out?
Separate it out from the, taking out the resolution part, the Act I?
Yeah, separate it for the exceptions.
I don't know, that would be a good question for Jack.
I, I think that can be separated, can't it?
You could separate that.
They generally go together.
You could have a preliminary general fund budget of X. Doesn't mean that you want to authorize the administration to apply for exceptions.
All right, so.
I mean, that's possible.
Then we have to call back the original motion and have a new motion to, have it separate, right? So, all right, so, do I have a motion then to recommend the 2018-2019 budget totaling
I think you have to formally withdraw it.
Do I have to formally withdraw it first? Okay, so, then I take a vote on the formal throw?
I'll throw the motion when I withdraw.
Do you wanna withdraw the motion officially, the first motion?
Don't get the withdrawal. A motion was made, a second was made.
Oh, sure. I'll withdraw the motion if there's a request from a board member to amend it.
Second, second. All right, so, Mr. D'Azio.
I'll note that I had a similar request last year, and that motion was denied, but I will, I will.
Okay. All right, so.
As professional courtesy, I'll extend that to you.
All right, so, Mr. D'Azio has withdrawn his motion, and Mrs. Romic has seconded that withdrawal. All right, so now, I need a motion to recommend approving the adoption of the preliminary budget for 2018-2019 totaling $260,621,247. Do I have a motion for that? So moved. All right, do I have a?
I'll second.
Okay, so, moved by Mrs. Burkowski, seconded by Mrs. Ott. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the first motion passes. All right. Do I have a motion then to apply for the exceptions for the Act I index limitation to which the district is eligible per the attached resolution per item BA2A dash Y?
So moved, and I'll have a comment in a minute.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Moved by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Romic. Comments or questions?
Sure, I'd just like to comment that, as is the case in prior years, again, it will depend on what the final budget looks like, but initially, I'm not inclined to support a budget that takes advantage of the exceptions, but given that the overwhelming majority of the Board is new, I think for the purpose of going through the process to understand how budgeting works and the constraints that we have from the state, I, I don't see why we wouldn't apply for the exceptions at this point, just not to take the options off the table for the new more board members. Again, I likely will not favor utilizing them, but at this point, I think we ought to afford, again, professional courtesy to the new board members to see what that process looks like.
That's absolutely contrary to what you said a year ago.
What did I say a year ago?
You wouldn't support it at all.
I just, I think I just indicated that I'm not inclined to support a budget with.
Not inclined to support.
I won't.
And that, no.
I won't commit one way than the other to a budget when we've seen one version of it, but what I'm saying is, my preference has always been to stay within the confines of Act I.
Here's your opportunity.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I think, just to be clear, everything we're talking about right now is just to not constrict options. We're gonna evaluate, look to see what's there.
Correct.
Same that's been done in the past, except maybe for last year, 'cause that, you said that before, right?
Yes.
All years prior to this Board, they still applied for the exceptions. They just were not exercised.
Correct.
We're not doing anything different that hasn't been done before.
That's correct.
Okay. We good on that? Thumbs up, bud. All right.
Okay. All right, are there any other comments or questions? Or, can I have it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, I wanna pose. Motion carries. Moving on to other business then. Recommend acceptance of the letter of resignation dated February 1, 2018 from North Penn School Board Member John Schilling, effective February 5, 2018.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Romic. Do I have any comments or questions?
Just like to thank John for his service. I think 22 years is the number, so, you know, hopefully, at some future meeting, we'll see John and can present him with a plaque thanking him for his service, but in his absence, I'd just like to convey my appreciation for over two decades of service to the community, and certainly wish him well in the future.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions?
It's been nice working with John, and I'll miss him, his support, anyway.
Yes. I'd like to say I appreciated John's guidance when we first all came onto the Board, so he was very, very kind when we all came on. All right, do I have, so I have a motion to accept his approval, his resignation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, with that action, we do have a vacancy, and I'll summarize what I believe to be the consensus of the Board in my conversation with the Board regarding that vacancy, that being that we would accept letters of interest and a resume from interested individuals from the community. All of this will be detailed on our website. The deadline for doing that would be the 23rd of February, 4 o'clock PM. Those letters of interest and resumes would be submitted to the Board Secretary, Mr. Scrocki, and make sure you get those in by the 4 o'clock deadline on the 23rd of February. Given that, then, the Board would choose those individuals from that pool of applicants from whom they would like to hear more and have interviews, and interviews would be set up then for March 6. That would be our next opportunity when we meet as a Board. It would be a work session night that would also double in as an action meeting in order to fill the vacancy. So, look forward to that. Is that the consensus of the Board? I believe it is.
Yes, yes.
So, we'll do that.
Thank you. Okay, so, I think we're going to adjourn briefly. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Take a five-minute break?
Doesn't have to be that.
Take a five-minute break, or? Are you taking a break at all?
Yeah, we can, wanna do five minutes?
All right, so, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
All right. Okay, we do have one work session topic this evening. That topic is strategic planning. I will remind our community that we do have a strategic plan in place. There are copies, I believe, in the back of the room. We have copies at each Board Member's station also. That strategic plan was from the 2015 through 2018 time period, so it is time for the school district to work on the next strategic plan. It is due by November, and a part of that strategic planning is to engage the Board and the community in the process. We also, of course, have members of the Board that are relatively new to being Board Members, and we thought it'd be very important to have some discussion about direction and prioritization. For the benefit of those that are following at home, this particular document I'm referencing does indicate that we have a vision, a mission, core values, and then five goals. Those goals are the following. Goal one is student achievement, and we have four strategies under that goal. Goal two is safe, healthy, and orderly environment, and we have four strategies under that goal. Goal three is organizational effectiveness, and we have two strategies under that goal. Goal four is quality workforce, and three strategies to go along with that goal. And then finally, goal five is school, community engagement, and we have a strategy that goes with that. So, that was the 2015-18, and we are in the process, and this, tonight, is a part of that process. Mark Warren is one of our Board Members who is very skilled at facilitating a process, and he's back there with the mic, ready to roll here. So, we're gonna turn it to Mark, and we'll take it from there. So, Mark, it's yours.
Thank you, sir. So, thanks, everybody. I know this is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, or not we, but what the Board has done in the past. As, as Dr. Dietrich mentioned, this is something that I kinda do during, as my day job, so it was a natural thing for me to ask to see if we could put together, basically, a group session where we get everybody's ideas out on the table. This is a new group for all, we've all been working together for the past two months, but this is the first real-time, you know, we had the holidays, we go through the New Year, we win Super Bowls, and now, now it's time to work, okay? So, I do not have a massive slide deck. I just have a couple things to explain where we're going here. So, we're essentially gonna be in a four-step process. There's already a strategic plan. We need to update the strategic plan with the new work and, and add to it with all the new things that are coming through. So, we're in the ideation step right now. All we are doing tonight is throwing ideas out on the table, okay? We need to understand what folks would like to accomplish in their term. We wanna understand a little bit more about what the administrators are seeing in their day-to-day operations and the areas that they are feeling affected on, and how we can help to, to bridge those gaps. Once we get all of those ideas out on the table, we're gonna catalog them in a, in a Google Doc, and we'll just capture them as we go through. Later, we'll get to the very easy part of consensus, where we'll all get together, and in about 10 minutes, we'll just figure out what everybody agrees on, and we'll move forward.[1785.11] And we'll do that about 50 times, so it'll take us a long time to do that. Consensus is gonna be the tough one, so we're not really dealing with merit and value of ideas tonight. We're literally just dealing with ideas, we wanna get them out. Once we get through that rough part of the consensus, we'll just need to figure out the gap analysis of where we are versus where we wanna be, so that we can start figuring out the tasks that, the tasks that we need to accomplish. Then we'll build in the action plans, and then we'll supplement a lot of the stuff that Dr. Holman and everybody's already put together, okay? Pretty simple. Any questions on that slide that I've put up there, from anybody? Anybody? Yes, ma'am?
Do you have a chance to add ideas in? Because right now, it just says, "Ideas from the board members and administrators."
Yes, ma'am. We are gonna have a public comment section at the end of this, but this will be a very protracted process, and we always have the email address and then a couple other ways to contact the board that you can submit those items in, and we will be bringing those things in. The hope is that, with a lot, especially with the most recent election, the hope is that you're gonna see a lot of the things that you are interested in seeing. At the end of public comment, you'll be able to either affirm or, or say, yeah, add some extra stuff in, okay? You got it. Any other things before I move on to the next slide? Outstanding. Okay, so this is just a quick slide to basically describe the difference between strategy or the strategic side of, trying not to get in people's way, I'm gonna step over here. So, the, the board is the top of the pyramid there with the strategic side of stuff. So, we are the ideas on, and the direction on where we would like to go, strategic planning. The base that holds the pyramid up is the operation side. The administrative areas that we have here are the leadership for that group, and then just, if there was another sub-part of that base that holds everything up, that's the actual staff and faculty and the line of workers that are doing the work out and about. So, everything happens at the bottom of that pyramid, and that is the group that makes everything happen. The in-between is where those two areas come back together. So, it's not too big of a factor here, it'll, it'll come in a little bit more when we get to the consensus phase of items. I bring this up because I want to understand the difference on how the board and the administrators interact. We are not dictators, and the administrators are not like peons or little worker bees that go out and do our will. This is very much a collaborative effort, and we need to work together, okay? Any questions on that slide? Excellent, okay. So, now we get to the actual exercise that's happening tonight. We're gonna take three to five minutes of what's called I-time, or quiet time, whatever you wanna call it. People are gonna think about or write down in two to four-word headlines or summaries some of the, either goals or ideas or things that they would like to accomplish or get done or address, whatever it is, whatever's on your mind that concerns you about the job that you're doing or that you wanna accomplish in the school district, you wanna get some of those things down on paper, okay? Then we'll do a round robin, and I'll start with Mr. Skrocky, and we'll work our way down, and we'll do one person at a time. Mr. Skrocky will give us one, and then we'll move over to Dr. Holman. We'll do 1-1-1, and we'll go until nobody has anymore. The reason why we're gonna do one at a time, one, we wanna give everybody a chance to speak, and, two, there's often going to be a lot of commonality between what people are trying to say. So, if you have a list of six things, maybe by the time it gets to Ms. Ott, four of them have already been checked off because there's some consensus of commonality. So that way, we don't repeat each other, okay? Those common starter items, there were five things that we kinda knew that have come up quite a bit. So, full-day kindergarten is up there, the timeline of facility renovations, class sizes, school population and space issues, stadium playfield spacious. You don't need to write those down on your list, they are captured. They are on the sheet already to move on to the next stage of consensus, okay? So you don't have to, you can free your mind, you don't have to worry about that, okay? Other guidelines, don't sweat that strat ops classification, that was really just to kind of give us an idea of where we're gonna be working. And I definitely wanna reinforce, no decisions are being made here. So because you see an idea come out, if Tina Stole says the district should start getting into the business of selling pineapple ice cream, definitely an idea, not necessarily something that's going to advance out when we get into the, to the larger strategic plan. And I'll reiterate again then, there's a debate on merit and value of ideas to come later. I can 100% say that not everybody agrees that full-day kindergarten may have the merit or the value that are probably sitting in this room. And I'm not just talking about the board, I'm talking about everybody that's over here. Value is one thing, whether it's useful is another, is something that's completely different. We do not want to prevent people from getting ideas out, because one of the things that a lot of us all ran here on was thinking outside the box. And just because something sounds crazy or undoable right now, doesn't mean that's not the case. The other side of it is, there's a lot of dependencies. Full-day kindergarten is also a giant, giant idea. There's a lot of things that you need to do in order to get into that. The judge here mentioned some of them, class sizes, space, teaching, curriculum, busing. All of those are large moving parts unto themselves. So it's a good idea to understand the work that we're putting in front of us, and that it could take some time, okay? Not everything's gonna happen at once. Okay, I've talked for quite a bit. Any final questions before we get in? We'll move into the, to the I-time part, this is very exciting, quiet time, I'm so good at this. Yes, Jenna, Ms. Ott.
I just wanna point out too, with this whole process, a lot of these ideas, as far as the board's concerned, has been in collaboration with the administration. I know many of us have been meeting with the administrators and trying to get a sense of their feelings on certain issues, and that has helped to inform us a little more. So I do wanna thank the administration for all of that, it's been incredibly helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. I will plus-one that, and that reminded me of two things I wanted to say. One, even with my own feedback, since I am new, I may come up with an idea or say something that's like, "Yeah, we're already doing that, great." That means I, I actually have a checklist on there to learn more about it and understand it. The second thing is, if you want to participate, we hope that you participate. If I am freaking people out because they're not talkers, or they don't feel prepared, or they don't have ideas, this is not the first and only chance to get ideas in. So we will be able to iterate on this process, and if we get to you and you say, "defer," I'm not gonna write "defer" down, I'll just, I'll skip you, and that's what we'll do, okay? All right. So we're gonna go ahead, and last thing I'll ask is, Ms. Ott, if you could act as my timekeeper. I don't wanna be here all night, I only have 60 minutes scheduled for the entire session, and I've eaten up 10 of it. So, we'll go into the I-time, and then I'm gonna prepare to start captioning ideas, okay? All right. Okay, I see some people are still, still writing, so I'm gonna give everybody about another minute. That's your one-minute warning. All right, board and administrators, how we feeling? Need more time? Pretty good? Nothing's gonna stop you from adding stuff in. In fact, that's one of the benefits of Round robin too, you'll hear somebody say something, and it'll key off something else. All right. My, my audio help or my video help could switch over real quick? Thank you very much.
And Mark, I think we had some discussion as we were planning this about not getting hung up, per se, on the difference between a strategy and a goal, as we're just gathering right now.
Yeah.
I wanna comment on that.
Yeah, we're just gonna, as, as words start to go around, you don't need to classify it. All the classification, all the prioritization, the grouping of, of ideas and items into related work buckets, all that will happen later. Right now, all we're concerned about is, is getting your thoughts out and capturing them here. The only thing I might ask for is, if it's either not super clear or too general, maybe just either another resumorization or a quick headline. So, but you'll see as we go on, pretty good, okay? Mr. Skrocky, you got one?
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I'll make it real easy, I'll steal one that was already listed and on the chart, and that would be facility renovations. I think it's pretty timely because we do have requests for proposals issued right now for a feasibility study, facility study, for three of our buildings and a fourth building as an alternative. The three buildings are North Penn High School, Nap Elementary School, the Educational Service Center, and the alternate is Pendale Middle School. I think it's important to determine the scope of the projects, what the potential financing might be, and what the timeline for those projects might be. So my choice would be the facilities renovations.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Dr. Holman?
Sure. First one I would like to suggest would be an expansion of staff, student, and community understanding of cultural proficiency, especially given the demographic trends in our district.
Excellent. Can you give me that in four words?
Sure. Understanding of cultural proficiency. Or just cultural proficiency strategies, however you wanna say it.
Done. Cultural, cultural? One more time.
Cultural proficiency strategies is fine.
And I'll fix my spelling later, too. My cold, dead fingers are not working. So, before we get to Mrs. Prokowsky, Mr. Fusco is going to come late and/or provided a list earlier, as did Mr. Casa. So Jenna Ott is kindly volunteered to speak up in their stead when we get to their seat. So can you give me Christians, Mr. Fusco's first, first shot?
His is special education supports, so behavioral support, mental health professionals, and space where needed.
Special education support?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Prokowsky?
An evaluation of the long-range funding necessary for the renovations and infrastructure challenges that we face. Any four words you'd like? Pick 'em.
I am next. I think my big one was, my first, I'll get to my last one. My first big one is website modernization. And some of that has already been handled by the board doc stuff. So, that's all right.
Dr. Dietrich?
So you got special education supports, the way you characterized them, Mark? That was the one that Christian gave us?
Yeah, it was Mr. Fusco's, yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to add to that, supports for mental health. So that would go beyond special ed, so we have regular education children that have some real mental health concerns about.
Mental health needs, is that good?
That's great.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Stole?
I think this ties into what Dr. Holman wanted. I wanted to set up a diversity committee. I think, do we already have something like that?
At, at present, we have an executive committee made up of staff. We do not at present have a form, we've had some parent meetings, but we do not at present have a formal committee that includes community members.
And that's what I would like, something with the community.
Okay, so, put some specificity around the diversity committee, committee with community member? Okay. Mr. D'Azio?
I think I'll add to Mr. Fusco's point and Dr. Dietrich's point and just make it a little bit more broad and say, as the needs of our students change, we need to make sure that we have a staff that is capable of meeting those needs. So, as I travel the buildings, the, the things that I hear about the most are changing behavior, increased mental health needs, and a need for more staff to support our inclusionary practices. But I don't wanna limit it to just those three areas. So I guess my topic more broadly would just be saying, seeking administrative input regarding making sure we have a staff that is capable of meeting the needs of our students as the needs change over time.
So, expanding?
Ensuring a workforce that's able to meet changing student needs.
Okay. And Ms. Ott, before I have you go, I'm realizing I'm not projecting up there, I thought I had a mirror display. So let me finish writing out his thought, and then I'm gonna shift it over there.
Yep.
This is embarrassing for a technical person, but I don't, I don't own a Chromebook other than this one. How do I, how do I mirror out without fussing around here too much? Outstanding, thank you. All right. Thank you for your patience, Ms. Ott.
Do you want Jonathan's first, or do you want-
Oh, is Jonathan supposed to be between you? Sure, give me Jonathan and then you're...
Before you go to that, I do wanna thank our student. That's what we do all the time. We don't know what we're doing. We ask a student and they show us how to do it.
And not too proud to ask for help. Well done. Let me make sure I didn't forget Jonathan's or Mr. Casa's name up here. I did, I left him out, like a jerk.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Go on vacation, that's what happens. He's also gonna get assigned everything for not being here. When you're not here, you get all the work. That's right. All right, Mr. Casa?
Student climate survey.
Student climate survey. Nailed it. Ms. Ott?
Cool. Mine's more curriculum-based and it's coming from more of the students. Some, just look into the alignment between ninth grade and the high school. There was some talk about classes are a little bit confusing in the way that they're, the naming conventions, the structure. So I'm wondering if we can look into that.
Okay, I wrote that as alignment between ninth grade and high school transition. Is that accurate?
Since ninth grade's technically high school, even though it's in the middle school building. They'd like us to look into that.
Okay. Will you help me fix it later?
Yeah.
Thanks.
You got it.
Ms. Ramich?
So I'd like to build a little bit on Dr. Dietrich's comment. I think looking at ways of addressing the social, emotional, and mental health issues of students by identifying key new staff positions. But to be a little bit more specific, I think that there's value in not looking at just the child and their school environment, but ensuring that those positions also understand the community and the home. And so positions that are linking, linking out from the school to address those concerns. And you're gonna ask me for four words?
I am, yes. But the context was amazing, thank you.
Can I, maybe I just put in there new position, you know, look at considering new positions that would link mental health needs to school and community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramich. Ms. McQ?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to also dovetail with Dr. Holman and I believe Ms. Stoll and Mr. D'Azio and talk about increasing our recruitment efforts for promoting the diverse workforce that will be able to better meet the needs of our students as we see them changing throughout our most recent times. So increasing recruitment efforts to meet, or to promote a diverse and perhaps highly-qualified workforce to meet the needs of our students. Thank you. That's the HR perspective.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'd like to suggest that we develop and fund a long-range facility improvement plan, which is, I see is different than our renovation projects. It's maintaining our buildings, replacing boilers, replacing roofs, a long-term plan for that. Long-range facility plan?
That is outstanding. Long range is two years, three years, five years?
Ten or fifteen?
Ten or fifteen years, you got it. Thirty, is that what I heard from the... Let's start with ten and then we'll multiply it. All right, Mr. Skraki, right back.
Can we go back to Mr. Kennedy? I don't know if I have another one.
You didn't, you defer?
Yeah, I think I'm fine with what's been presented.
Good to go? Yeah, there's a lot of people here. Four of mine are already gone, so I only have one left.
Thank you.
I have three more, so I'll take yours. Mine, I would say early childhood learning slash kindergarten preparedness. So partnerships to help our students come to kindergarten prepared.
Is that not specific enough for what I have written there? Because that could be for anything.
That's fine. That's fine.
There, that makes it for children, right? That's where you're coming from, on the children's side?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Fusco?
PACE. He's got, just PACE.
I saw that on there.
Yeah, so we'll take that one.
Do, does somebody wanna explain what PACE is so that I can...
PACE is a survey administered by the state of Pennsylvania every other year. That is a survey of students in specific grades and asks questions that relate to getting a profile of the community in terms of drug use, alcohol use, and so forth, to try to help identify needs that the community may need to support.
So, does this kinda go in with Jonathan's?
Yes.
Survey, so we can group the two of them?
Yeah, I think, without having talked to Jonathan about it, it depends what, exactly what he means by student climate survey.
Yeah.
Climate could certainly encompass more than, the PACE is very narrowly focused on certain behaviors. Climate certainly could go beyond that.
Okay.
But it's certainly related.
Yes, okay, great.
Thank you. Ms. Prokowski?
Could I think Jonathan's is part of that? Yes. Educational improvement in student scores.
Scores in specific testing or specific areas, or...
We are... Whatever. The niche?
St. Charles.
Says we're so high, well, what do we need to get higher?
Okay.
Or whatever the latest version of niche is.
Student achievement, basically.
Got it. I think most of mine were taken. I'm gonna steal one from Jonathan because I know what's on his and I'm gonna take it. Expanding revenues, alternative revenue streams is something that I'm looking at. I would prefer not to raise taxes, so let's have, let's spread it around, right? Mr. Patchell agrees. I'm gonna change that to investigate expanded revenue streams. Mr. Dietrich?
I will go with expand opportunities for students to make informed career choices. So I would say, two words, career education.
Career education. Thank you, sir. Ms. Stoll?
I guess I kinda tie that to that a little bit. I wanted to do more to promote the VOTAC and those kind of careers.
Please excuse my penance, my penchant for capitalizing all the wrong things, but thank you. Mr. D'Azio?
Mrs. Stoll stole my idea about the tech school. But I guess at this point, my thought would be, I hope that as we prioritize all of these items and develop an action plan, I'd like to see our building administrators and staff involved in some formalized way to help us prioritize and to help have that discussion about what they see as the most pressing needs in the buildings.
Is that good there? Right about there? Mr. Casa?
This is a board one. An annual board member conflict of interest and disclosure statement that'll, political contributions, business conflicts, relatives employed, et cetera.
So the...
Holding us accountable.
Conflict of interest?
At the board level.
I think we do that already. We have to submit that to the state every year.
Well, we have, some of those items are on that form, some are not. Things like relatives who are employed and things are not on that form.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Ott?
Mine is actually gonna be kind of in line with what was said in public comment. Better community communication as to what the community is actually paying for. I want us to get a lot better at making that very clear to everyone where their tax dollars are going.
Oh my goodness. Thank you. Ms. Ramich?
I'd like to see us develop and implement plans to engage community, really targeting the kind of our, the most underserved communities, specifically looking at ways of getting immigrant students and parents more involved.
Ms. McQ?
Yes, looking to the health and wellness of our employees. I'd like to see us investigate enhanced wellness opportunities for our employees.
Mr. Kennedy?
Expand security staff into the elementary schools.
So expand security staff in elementary?
Into the elementary schools.
Mr. Skraki has passed. Ms. Holman?
I would say my next one, you can capture it as transformational digital learning. We've, the last couple of years, been moving very heavily into a one-to-one initiative in digital learning. We wanna continue to move that to really get transformational instruction, not just substitution.
Is that accurately, did I capture it well enough there? Says transformational digital learning, not just substitution? Is that good? Substitution of digital, okay. Thumbs up?
Yeah, point be using the technology to really transform the way we teach, not just, you know, using a Google Doc instead of writing something on paper kind of thing.
Outstanding. Mr. Fusco? Mr. Fusco is out. Ms. Prokowski?
To continue to monitor and minimize drug use and bullying in the schools and to train the everyone, staff and students, to spot it and take appropriate action.
Did I capture that okay? Expanded training for drug use and bullying? Good?
Some of it.
Is there something else should I add?
I also said to minimize it.
Oh. That's, that word's in the wrong place.
Yeah, don't minimize the monitoring.
All right. I am also going to pass because everybody captured my stuff. Mr. Dietrich?
Okay. I don't have it down to four words yet, but the gist of it is to expand our use of technology tools regarding employee productivity, particularly in the area of support staff. So for example, if we do have a retirement or a resignation, perhaps with the expanded use of productivity among all of our support staff, we might not have to replace that person because we have more technology tools available to us. So it has to do with technology used to, did you get it, Mark?
I think so. Expand tech tools to increase productivity for support staff? Thumbs up? Ms. Stoll?
I'm gonna pass, I'm...
You good? Mr. D'Azio?
I'll make my final point, developing partnerships with private sector, whether that be monetarily or to promote career development, which is sort of to Dr. Dietrich's point a few minutes ago, but somehow trying to tap into the resources of the private sector to further our mission.
Okay. Mr. Casa?
He's got discipline and behavioral intervention strategies across the district. Renew, review of programs, implementation of evidence-based programs. Some of this is connected to things like recess and other outlets.
Okay. Is that good?
Yeah. Think I can review it.
Ms. Ott?
Mine's a joint one with Jonathan. Teacher and admin training, as well as appropriate-level student peer education regarding gender violence, victimology, and bystander intervention.
Spellings are...
Mark, I am, there were some, there were some items in the beginning that were already put on the list, is that correct?
That is correct.
What, what were they? Can we just clarify that again?
I'll go through them again for you, real quick. As soon as I, victimology, that sounds like... Okay, good? Let me go back and review this. Okay, the common ones were full-day kindergarten, so these ones are already on the bucket. Nobody needed to bring these up. Full-day kindergarten, class sizes, school population levels and space issues, stadium playfield space issues, and the facilities have no timeline. But it was okay because Mr. Skraki scoped his down to the immediate RFP that we were talking about. And then Mr. Kennedy also brought on the longer timeline, so we had some specificity there, which is good. Is that all right, Mr. D'Azio?
Yes.
Good to go? Okay. Ms. Ott, did I get your thing captured correctly? Great.
Yeah.
Ms. Ramich?
Develop strategies to monitor inclusion and continue to grow and develop in how that is implemented with it across the district.
Ms. McQ?
Yes, I was looking at investing in growing technologies to advantage our students and our staff and their efficiencies. So just continuing to invest in the growing technologies. It may have been captured with some others.
I'll grab it.
A little bit broader.
I'll grab it.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
Summer opportunities for North Penn students interested in facilities, engineering, and architecture.
In architecture, what was the word before that, though?
Engineering, architecture, and facilities.
In facilities, okay. Outstanding. Ms. Holman?
Last one. Similar to Mr. D'Azio, but just expanding a little beyond private sector. Partnerships with community organizations, which could be nonprofits and so forth in addition to private sector.
Yep. Thank you very much. What was the first word you used there, Ms. Holman?
Partner.
Partner.
Partnerships.
I was like, how did private ships get in there? I was like, I don't even know what I was typing there to fix that. There we go. I'm gonna make that singular. Fusco was done, right? Yep. Ms. Prokowski?
To tie the career education that Dr. Dietrich picked up and the private sector partnerships that, that Mr. D'Azio picked up, and to merge them into what does our community, what does our community need and what can we give them? We have more, we, our college-bound kids is really high, but you know what? The need's really down at the machinist level. So what do they really need and what can we give them?
So I wrote that as identify the community needs and what we can offer them as an outcome for the professional training? Is that good? Okay.
Workforce investment board.
I passed. Mr. Dietrich? Dr. Dietrich?
Maybe it's because I'm thinking about tomorrow and the potential for weather delays or a loss of another day of instruction, but I'm interested in exploring the option available to us to have students work online on a snow day in order for us to continue to use that as a day of instruction. And the state makes it available, and there are only 12 schools in the state that have taken, you know, advantage of that, but I'm interested in that. So it's making use of the online opportunities for students on, on snow days, to make it real simple.
Okay.
In clement weather days.
Dan, you are not allowed to write that Dr. Dietrich is looking to take away snow days from kids. Not allowed. You are ruining the fun for the students.
That's right.
You are ruining the fun for the students. That's right. Ms. Stoll? Pass. Mr. D'Azio, pass. Miss, hold on, Mr. Casa? If that's a pass, can you do it in Mr. Casa's voice? All right. Ms. Ott? All right. Ms. Romic?
Um, I think, you know, everyone who works for the district has an annual evaluation or receives some type of, either self-evaluation or receives feedback, and I think it's important as a board and as a collective that we create a system to evaluate ourselves. Um, and I, so I think linking a board evaluation to this process would be helpful.
And, and who is providing?
Other than that, along the way, in between.
Who would, who is your intent? Is it for the community and administrators or just administrators?
There are tools that boards can use to evaluate themselves.
Okay.
So you looking into those to implement.
I love it. Ms. McQ? Pass. Mr. Kennedy? Also a pass. Who has any left? Ms. Bukowski, Ms. Romic?
Brought up at one point to improve the, or change, fix, improve the, um, uh, performance evaluation that we do of the administration. And I'd like to tie that into, to yours, uh, Ms. Romic, to broad, just broaden it.
Yeah.
We need a better one for that, and while we're developing one, we can develop the other.
Sounds good. Ms. Romic?
Um, I just want to make sure that we're addressing socioeconomic disparities to ensure that all students have a level playing field in the school district.
Does anybody else have additional items tonight? Doesn't have to be-
I have one more. Can I go, and then I'm done?
Yes.
And I promise to stop talking. Um, when I was appointed, um, elementary school kids who knew I had been appointed universally gave me the same feedback, so I have, I feel like I have to raise this for them. But seeing improved school nutrition, um, they specifically would like to see community gardens in their schools.
You are reminding me of a pseudo joke I made during the election, but, Dr. Dietrich?
Just trying to think if it's already been captured. Sometimes you get thoughts and it's kind of piece of this and a piece of that and everything, but basically I'm still thinking about organizational efficiencies in terms of cost control. We want to try to direct the resources to instruction, so are there areas anywhere within the organization where we can be even more effective for that to happen?
So is that just like general, like continual improvement areas?
Yeah, basically.
Uh, I'm gonna jump back and add one for myself here. Taking a look at how recess levels were used during the school year was something that actually, I made a joke about it during the debate, but then several students and parents actually came and spoke to me afterwards about it, so it's probably something that I'll, I want to take a look at there. Okay. That is 8:50, and it looks like we are done, and we, we went through 40 minutes worth of stuff on here. We're gonna do 10 minutes of, or five minutes of public comment, I guess, 10 minutes of public comment, and, okay.
So I think we should have a little bit of discussion about next steps too then, so we'll have to figure out where to put that.
That's exactly where I was gonna go. I was gonna advance. I don't have my next slide up there, but I was gonna talk about next steps, and then I was gonna go sit down so that people can come up here and sit, so I'll stay here and I'll unplug. So the next steps here are going to be the collation and organization of the data that we pulled down here. After we have public comment, I'll add in some of the things here, and there'll be a public comment column. I don't know what the date is going to look like, but we have that set of steps. Right, so this is, we're gonna organize the data and then we'll discuss it, but we'll be moving into the consensus step after we have things organized, and then we'll have to come up with a process on how we're going to sort through and, and get things on the docket, as well as integrate it with the immediate needs of work that have to happen with RFP stuff and the existing work that is in the strategic plan and other ongoing projects. So that's where we're going to be. We'll move on to the next step. Any questions on that before I step aside to let public comment happen? All right. Let me get out of the way.
Okay, would anybody like to give public comment?
Yeah, my name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane in Monckumry Township, although I do use the Lansdale Post Office, and I was remiss in my last comment. I said, what I would like to address, if you came off a zero debt, zero debt, that would be $100 million, you wouldn't even be able to afford this renovation to the high school. Where do you plan to get $100 million? Anybody buy the lottery ticket? How about a cookie sale? You know what I mean? It's ridiculous. Here's how you do it. We have full-time, year-round high school. You have to be a little difficult on your labor negotiations. That's why Boeing moved out of Washington State, because you know what the machine is? They wouldn't listen to anything. They moved to North Charleston. They're very happy down there. The union had a chance to vote on that. They turned it down. You know why? They got sick and tired of dysfunctional labor contracts. That's why it happened, and that's why Boeing now is over $300 a share and doing fantastic. And you got GE, which is bogged down in the old thing, at $16 a share. That's free market capitalism. So you need to rework how you do your labor contracts, how this all works out. This step system is the stupidest thing ever devised, and I said, you're living in the past. I tell you what, the public school system is just about crawling out of a cave. You need to get realistic about what the world is doing now, realistic about the people that are gonna pay money into this system, and you know what? And what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna move to Florida. You know what? I won't pay any state. I'm gonna leave my house empty, and you know why? Because I can borrow money on it, and I get to borrow $500,000 in a federal tax code, and you know what? I'm not sending any new customers. It's gonna sit there empty. That's what I'm, that's my plan. I do have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell.
Helena Pavlian E.T. Windsor Circle, North Wales. Short and sweet. Just wanna say thank you. Thank you for including us. Thank you for including the community. Thank you for the new school board members for going out into our schools, going out and asking our teachers and our kids what they need, what they want, engaging yourself, not just sitting behind that board and not caring about what anybody else does or says. I've seen more of you guys out and engaged in these schools and these teachers and these kids in these two months than I went through North Penn. But even then, I have family that teaches in North Penn, and it's the same thing. I can't thank you enough. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Don't listen to the bed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make comment?
Corinne Mayland, Whites Road, Lansdale. Yes, my kids, my munchkins went to York Avenue. Um, under the theory of, when I'm reading it here in terms of healthy environment, I like the idea of having that as a overarching theme that you guys still keep track of. I heard some things here that do sort of fall into that of identifying behavioral and health issues. I don't know that we should have staff in there, but I totally agree that the staff should be aware of how to see it and how to go and connect people in, especially at this stage, the York Avenue stage. Don't wait till they get to Pendale, they get over to North Penn High School, get them when they're early. Also, Mr. Warren, don't make a joke out of it. I actually think it would be good to make sure that we limit the use of indoor recess. I think it's crazy to lock people up just because it's less than 40 degrees outside. I admit, I'm biased. I grew up in Wisconsin. I walk to school, I bike to school. Winter's here or nothing. Give the kids a chance to do that. Let them go outside. I do have, one of my kid's friends goes to Pendale, had to get a special permission just so he could walk home, even though he took the bus to school. If the kids wanna walk, let them walk. Give them the chance to go and walk and bike. It's all about having a healthy environment. They're gonna be a lot more settled when they come in the morning if they have a chance to get outside before they walk into the classroom. Walk back to school. Yes, and to the point, I'm just trying to go and find my way here, and I'm really thankful that they actually made it public that you would have this open session, because I'm all for having more transparency and more engagement just from the community. Because, yeah, it's our kids, and it's where all of our support services from, we go on Main Street, and we have someone serving us food and the other stuff. It's like, it's all connected, so keep the transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two, I need to sign in. Sean Devlin, president of the North Penn Education Association, teacher here, and also proud parent of two beautiful daughters who went here, and also my stepdaughter, who is now going to be graduating Westchester. Thank you to the education she got at North Penn. There were two things that I wanted to piggyback off of, but Mark, I can't remember what the first one is. The second one, though, is really near and dear to me, and, and it's probably piggybacking off of what Dr. Dietrich said. We have a program at the high school that really impressed me when Ashley was going off, and I, I can speak for all their parents too, going off and trying to decide what she wanted to do, where she wanted to go, who she wanted to be when she entered college. And it's sitting up there in the high school. What happens there is they have counselors, a counselor who not only helps out that department in career planning, but also has a, a caseload as well with students who they are responsible for. And I would love to see, I guess, in, in my head, and maybe some people term it a perfect world, but I would love to see that position be a sole position just to work with the students in career planning, whether it be technical planning, whether it be off to college, whether it be a career in something else, maybe that's not even invented yet. It's a great workspace for kids to go, but as a parent, it's also a great thing to know that your child went there, has some goals, has kind of an outline of what they need to do to succeed. College expenses are through the roof, and I'm paying for it now, and to have a place where your child can go and get a little bit of a push, nudge, direction, whatever you wanna call it, I think is an awesome place to have. So I would love to see us, like, booster that, so Kurt, I'm, I'm right there with you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. Ted Trissler Hatfield, Vice President of North Penn Ed Association and a special education teacher in the district, which special education is near and dear to me. Um, you know, when we take a look at our students with IEPs, we take a look at a continuum of services that are offered for these students, from the very most restrictive, which may be an out-of-school, a home placement, what have you, to the least restrictive, which would be our general education classroom. Within the strategic plan measure, one of the indicators on there is that all district schools meet the state target for the inclusion of students with IEPs in the general education classroom. The current statistic on that statewide is that 67% of the students in the Commonwealth with IEPs are educated, spend at least 80% or more of their day within the general education classroom. And I just wanna make sure that within our district, we are taking a look at the continuum of services that we can offer for our students, and that includes everything, not just a full inclusionary model, not just a pull-out model, supplemental model, what have you. So that, that's something, again, near and dear to me as a special education teacher as well in the district. So I would hope that we would take a look at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. So I guess with that, we move to adjourn? What? Oh, okay, okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.